I'm calling an order, the Finance Administration Committee meeting of February 25, 2010. Will the minute take here? Please call the roll. Alderman Shockey. Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Cadella.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
I declare a quorum. I make a motion to approve minutes dated February 11, 2010. Is there a second?
A move.
And a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a report and recommendation on the Allied Waste Contract. With that, I will ask our city manager, Mr. Dalthwaite, to take us through the proposal, and then I'll entertain a few questions, then I'll make a motion and open it up again.
I'm sorry, I gotta excuse myself.
If we can let the minutes reflect, Alderman Coles is recusing himself.
Is this on? Jeff, can you hear me? If you recall, several months ago...
Okay, but you're not recusing yourself, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
No, no, because I know his nephew works for...
So I'm not clear, Alderman Lewitin. Are you recusing yourself or not?
His nephew is a subcontractor, so I don't want any prime recusing.
Okay, so then you are recusing yourself. Okay.
We've still got a quorum.
There is still a quorum.
You still have a quorum.
I get garbage service from them, I'm not recusing them. Okay.
I sent you all a memo that outlined the salient points of the proposed new contract. You all, I assume, have seen it. I'll be brief, because I'm really talking to the TV and not to you all. Several months ago, as you recall, the council discussed the possibility of an extension of our present franchise agreement with Allied Waste, as opposed to bidding it out for a contract that expires in this April. And the council gave us conceptual approval to begin negotiations to try to get an extension to that contract. Since that time, our finance director, our assistant manager, our city attorney, and I have met three times with Allied, and we think we have a proposed contract that, on balance, is a favorable one for the city. And I'd like to take you through the high points, and then turn it over to you for any questions that you may have. In our discussions with Allied, we tried to fulfill a number of objectives. First of all, we tried to continue the concept of unlimited waste pickup to our residents, as opposed to a volume-based system whereby you pay for the amount of garbage that you put out at the curb. We tried to continue free service to other taxing bodies that are now included in the contract, that being the fire district, the library, and the park district. We wanted to try and smooth out the increase in monthly fee increases, and try and keep it as smooth as possible and avoid spikes. And to the extent possible, we wanted to explore the possibility of universal usage of what we call "toters," the plastic garbage carts that you see out at the curb in a number of different residences. So we talked about those, and Allied and the city went back and forth on some of those concepts, and we've arrived at a conceptual framework that we'd like to bring to your consideration tonight. And I've talked to each of you individually about this, so none of this should come as a great surprise. Allied proposes that we continue the concept of unlimited pickup to our residents, that we continuation the free service for the park district, the library, and the fire district. They propose a seven-year contract, beginning in May of this year and extending until April of 2017, a freeze in the first-year rates, that is, no increase the next year, in years two through seven, a four-and-a-half percent increase each year, and an annual contribution of $5,000 to the city to be used for our rental of portable toilets for city-sponsored functions like the Prairie Fest and those kind of things. Now, to put that four-and-a-half percent increase from year two to seven in perspective, if you annualize that over seven years, that comes to about 3.85 percent per year over the life of the proposed contract. And in my memo, I note that in none of the last five years has the increase been anything less than 4 percent. So the 3.85 percent annualized over seven years is less each year than any of the increases that we've seen in the last franchise agreement. And they also ask for a provision that allows Allied to request a rate increase if fuel prices increase by an unanticipated amount over, I think it's about $3 a gallon right now, and Mr. Vander Molen can elaborate on that. Then we get to the issue of the toders, the recycling and the solid waste carts. It's my opinion that that is an advantage to not only the company, but the city. It's an advantage to the company, because with universal toders, they're able to purchase vehicles that can pick these up without a waste hauler getting out of the car or out of the truck and having to physically take a trash can and dump it in. That saves them time, and it saves them money, because they don't have to deal with the issue of workers' comp. And if you look at workers' compensation rates for municipal employees, you will see a lot of times that waste haulers are second only to firefighters in terms of workers' comp claims, normally back injuries when they have to haul these trucks or these carts around. And I think it's an advantage to the city, because it cuts down on the waste that blows around. Right now, we have recycling bins that are not closed, we have trash cans that are out there, and we have bags that are out there, and it's not only unsightly, but a lot of times on a windy day, you'll see a lot of trash blowing around, and if they're self-enclosed, it's more of an aesthetic appearance to the city. So I think it's in both the company and the city's interest to try to get to that, and we talked a long time about that. And the proposal that Allied gave the city was that the company would furnish each resident with two toders, one for garbage, one for recycling. The default size would be a 90-gallon container for garbage, a 60-gallon container for recycling, but at the resident's request, they can modify that to accommodate whatever their particular household needs. Now, just to put that in perspective, I have one kid living at home, we have three people in our household, and I use a 30-gallon container for garbage and a 90-gallon container for recycling, because my wife is a recycling fool, and anything that can be recycled is. And typically, my recycling container is full, and my 30-gallon garbage container is about a third of the way full. But if a particular family needed two 60s, or a 30 and a 60, or a 30 and a 90, Allied can make that accommodation at their request. We had a concern that, in the past, the city would sell toders to residents who wanted them, and if a resident came into City Hall and wanted one of those toders, we would sell them for $40 or $60. And our concern was, well, what do we do with, number one, the containers the city's already purchased for resale, and what do we do for the residents who've already bought those containers and need to be compensated for their initial outlay? And Allied said, "We'll buy back the city's inventory of toders. Whatever you paid for them, we'll buy them back from you, no cost, no net cost to the city, and we will pay the city the cost of the toders that have previously been sold to the residents, and at the city's option, we can credit back those accounts the cost of the toder that had already been paid for." So if you had already come to the city and paid $60 for a toder, well, they'll credit that back, we've got that in our system, they'll credit back that back to the city, and we can credit the resident for the cost of the toder he had already incurred, and it's a net wash. Nobody has any out-of-pocket expenses, so that we can not only get to a universal toder system, but make sure that all of our residents are being treated equitably. In order to do that, Allied needs to invest in some new trucks, the automated trucks, and a picture of that has been included in the packet, that can pick these things up at the curbside without the hauler having to get out, and that's a significant capital investment. And in order to amortize the cost of that investment, they propose that we go to a two-day schedule. Right now, everybody gets picked up on Monday, and the proposal is to go to a Monday, Tuesday pickup schedule whereby residents either on the east side of Wooddale Road or the west side of Wooddale Road have Monday pickup, and the other folks have to go to Tuesday pickups. Is that an inconvenience? I think it is for about the first two weeks, until people realize and recognize that instead of Monday pickups, they now have Tuesday pickups. And as a matter of fact, when we get to holidays, like Thanksgiving, Christmas, whatever, those days are pushed back a day anyway to accommodate for the federal holiday. So, yeah, it's gonna be an inconvenience for a little while, but I think that inconvenience may be minor compared to the advantages that we may see in terms of going to the automated pickup. There are some other, in my opinion, minor changes to the contract. There's no longer gonna be Styrofoam that'll be recycled, because there's no market for it. There are some other, in my opinion, minor issues in the contract, but I think these are the highlights of what we've negotiated on balance. I think it's a pretty reasonable contract to extend for the next seven years, and I would recommend that the council, on balance, approve that and instruct the city attorney to finalize the franchise agreement and bring it back to the council for ratification. That's the sum and substance of my comments, and I'll be able to answer any questions that I can, and Rich Vander Molen can answer any questions that you all might have.
I had initially, in the preliminary discussion, I believe when you were here, Mr. Vander Molen, I brought up the concern about the fuel price increase. So let's try and flesh out some more of the detail. How would that work, and is there a clip level, and if gasoline hits $5 a gallon, then it would happen, and then does it get pulled off? Because all too often I see where, once it's assessed, then it's slow to come off the increase. So how do you propose it works?
Well, the current price of diesel fuel is about $2.85 a gallon. So we have a peg rate, which is a dollar higher, $3.85 a gallon, and we have a three-month test period before the May date. In other words, it would probably be December, January, and February. And if the average during that three-month period exceeds $3.85, we would have the right to go to the city and request an increase. And it's basically, it's just an opener. There's no formula involved. We would provide you with documentation as to what our average price was over that period. We'd show you how much fuel we use every week, you know, route by route, and try to come to an agreement. So there's, the only thing you're agreeing to is to give us a fair hearing under those circumstances. There's no mandatory thing, and then if during that same test period, the following year, the fuel is below the peg rate, it automatically comes off. And a further safeguard is that the peg rate increases at the same rate as the rate increases in the contract. So every year, that peg rate would go up 4.5 percent.
If it stayed above $3.85 consistently?
Yeah, it would have to be for, average over $3.85 for a three-month period.
Actually, it's $3.75.
Oh, $3.75 for a three-month period, and at that point, we would come and see you.
Okay, and then let's say a year later, it's at $3.85 and above, and a year later, does it have to average three months of being below $3.85 before it comes off, or it actually comes off after the first month?
I think it would have to be below the peg rate, but the peg rate goes up every year. So the fact that it goes up every year is advantageous to the city and its residents.
Right, okay. Okay, so if it goes below the peg rate in a month after it's been in effect, then...
I think you would call us in and tell us.
Yeah, and let me call you, okay.
Yeah, call us in. I've had that circumstance. We've only really exercised this once, and fuel prices were very volatile about two years ago, and we put it in place reluctantly. It was in place for three months, and then the mayor called us in after the fuel price went down and told us we needed to take the surcharge off, and we did.
Okay. And then also, this is a seven-year proposal, and I'm not necessarily opposed to it. However, we usually, I don't believe, get into seven-year contracts. So my question is, what is involved if, I think our service is really good right now, but let's say a change in ownership occurred or what have you, and service dropped off tremendously, what is the out that's being proposed here?
I defer to the attorney. I think you've always got an out for bad service.
The termination provision is set forth on page 20, section 7.02. The contract can be terminated by either party for reasons of nonperformance or violation of the terms of the contract. As well, one of your questions was on sale. There's a non-assignability clause in this contract, so, which can't be unreasonably withheld if a nonassignment, one of the suggestions, a possible nonassignment would be if the company were merged with another, would we allow the contract to be assigned so that the new company could take on the contract? But otherwise, we're in charge of the assignability of the contract. But if there were performance issues, we could terminate the contract.
Okay, good, thank you.
And as a matter of fact, when we first executed this contract five years ago, it was with BFI, and BFI merged with Allied during the term of the contract, so that's none unheard of.
Okay. Okay. And then lastly, I know we had preliminary conversations offline regarding if different townhome associations and other associations wanted to get into the contract. So do I understand correct, if that does happen at some point, we can just circle back, let's say it's a year down the road, and then determine if they get added in or not, or does it have to be before the contract?
I've had a conversation with the, one of the presidents of the homes associations in the townhouse development that you live in, and at the time, when I talked to her a couple months ago, I said, you know, you guys really need to give us, I wasn't aware, but there are like eight different homes associations that make up that townhome complex. I said, "It's really gonna need to be all or nothing. You need to get with the presidents of the other homes associations and tell us either you're all in or you're not in." And at the time, I told her, "We really need a decision by March or April, so that we can incorporate that into the new contract." Since then, however, and I didn't mention this, but because the fact, if you approve this, we're gonna go to universal toders, and we're gonna go to a Monday, Tuesday collection system, we probably won't institute that until the summertime, so that everybody's got a chance to be aware of it. We're gonna publicize the fact that we're going to Monday, Tuesday, we're gonna publicize the fact that we're going to universal toders, and it's gonna take some time for us to get the word out to everybody that there's a change coming. And that'll give those homes associations the opportunity to opt in, let us know that they want to be a part of the contract, and that'll give them the opportunity to sever their relationship with whatever hauler they've got now and bring themselves in. We can do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
What if you don't want to use those carts?
We would hope that you would, but we're gonna still take it as long as it's in an approved container, and the contract does define approved containers.
Okay. The other question I had, and I did read through this contract, and I even see it in this contract, how many garbage trucks pick up in our town now?
I'm sorry, I don't really know.
Okay. That's fine.
The times that I've known.
That's fine. The question I had in this contract, where does your, how's your yard waste going foul? Is, if you have a garbage pickup up on Tuesday, is yard waste going to be picked up in that area on Tuesday, or is yard waste going to be picked up on one day citywide?
No, it would be picked up on the same day. Everything would be on the same day. In other words, all three services, garbage, recycling, and yard waste, would be either on Monday or Tuesday, and every home would get all three services on the same day of the week. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yes, I did.
Any other, Alderman Cadella?
Mr. Manager, you talked about how the toders are advantageous to Allied Waste, and I agree. So is a seven-year contract. For all the reasons you said, the toders are advantageous, you know, manpower, and so forth, it seems to me that, in my opinion, that should have been a stronger argument that the city could have made to say, "Ally, if you really want to do this, you gotta find a way to keep us on one day." I agree for just about everybody that it's gonna be a few weeks of inconvenience, and they'll get used to it. But you know what, there's, you know, with yard waste in particular, you typically are doing a lot of that work on the weekend, and when you're done, on Sunday, you drag that stuff out to the curb. It's just another day, it's, you know, so I guess my point is, is that the inconvenience is kind of forever, albeit a minor one, but it's still an inconvenience forever, and at the cost of assisting Allied with an advantageous situation. Even the regular garbage, I mean, you know, we've got a blue-collar community here, I don't think you can deny that, people changing carpeting out over the weekend, a hot water heater, you know, things on, you know, work on your home, small projects, permitted projects, a lot of people working on their own places. It's easier when you're performing that work on a weekend, Sunday night, you bring everything out, and you don't think about it during the work week when you're off doing what you do five days a week to make money to pay Wooddale taxes. So I guess my point is, is that I think the inconvenience lasts forever, and maybe a lot of people aren't gonna see it as an inconvenience, but I guarantee a handful of people are, and I think it was unfortunate that, you know, we couldn't have, you know, we couldn't have found a way to keep it on the same day. So as near as I can tell, that's my only issue that I take with this contract, everything else seems to be okay.
Alderman Police.
The fuel surcharge, not a big fan. My question is, being that Allied's basically a pretty major company, I know some major corporations contract their fuel out, so if you guys contracted, oh, you said it's $2.85 right now, and you contracted for whatever, you made yourself a two-year deal or something, so if in the three months that it does go up, you could raise our rates, but your price would still, would never go up, because you had the contracted rate of $2.85, even though it might have gone up. Is that...
I've had that discussion, and we really aren't in a position to hedge all of our fuel. We're subject to the market, you know, just like the city of Wooddale would be, you know, and when we sit down with you, if we were to sit down with you, which I think is unlikely, but were that to be the case, you could tell us, you know, instead of taking it off in a year if it went down, that it would have to come off earlier, you know, went down, and that would be the nature of the agreement.
But the thing I don't see in here, let's say it goes to this $3.92 in the second year or whatever, on page 18, it doesn't say how much it's gonna go up, but right now we're at $2.098. If we get into this, pass this threshold, I hear it's gonna be discussion about it, you know, so if the city discusses, well, okay, we'll give you $2.099, we'll give you an extra penny, or you can come in and say, "We want $23."
Well, it's my understanding that we've been through this already once, and was it amiable to the city when it happened, Mr. Dalthwaite?
Well, it's never happened so far.
Wait, I thought it did, and then the mayor called the city, no.
That was another, that was another city.
Oh, another one, okay, got it.
That was not us, that wasn't us.
Okay, okay.
Right, we never had the fuel surcharge before, correct?
Well, Mr. Dalthwaite, do you foresee any problems doing it that way, where you look at the numbers and see the increase, and is it gonna be a pass-through of the increase?
Well, that would be a policy call on the part of the council. Right now, we pass through our costs that we pay to Allied, and we bump up our price by 5 percent to handle administrative costs.
I'm sorry, I was asking more, is Allied gonna pass through the extra cost of the fuel to us?
Well, that's a subject for discussion and negotiation. They'd have to come to us and say, "Listen, you know, the target price is $3.75, now it's at $3.90. We'd like an increase in the monthly fee to accommodate that 15 cents." And then we would negotiate how much of that 15 cents is applied to the bill. It probably wouldn't be the full 15 cents, because there's a lot of their costs that are not related to gasoline, it's labor and amortization, and they'd come in and they'd say, "Well, you know, we think that we ought to get 7 cents a gallon, or, excuse me, 7 cents a month more to accommodate the 15 cents per gallon." And we'd talk about that, and we'd, you know, arrive at something that we thought was appropriate, and we'd bring it back to you, and you could make that evaluation and make that decision. There's no magic bullet, magic formula, they'd come to us and say, "We're getting hit on gas prices, we need an increase," and we'd negotiate it.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Police.
Just a legal question for Mary. I mean, you're looking at the contract, we get the, the gas is gone up again, do they have the right to come in and say, "Well, we gotta charge you an extra dollar a home"?
Looking at the, it is section 4.02 of the contract, really what is written in here is an agreement to discuss the potential of an increase. There's no automatic increase allowed under the contract. What, for Allied to have to do it, they would have to make a written request with calculations to back up the need for the increase. And if the council or the administration, whoever deals with the increase first, had any additional questions, they could ask for additional questions. I believe the council would be making sure that if there were to be an increase, that Allied would have to prove why a fuel increase has impacted on their ability to perform under the contract. It wouldn't be as simple, in my estimation, as them just coming and saying, "Hey, look, fuel's increased, therefore you have to increase the contract." They actually have to provide documentation demonstrating how the increase impacts on the cost of their provision of services to the city of Wooddale. If they could convince you that a fuel increase has impacted on their ability, it would be a decision for the council to make whether they want to negotiate an increase in the contract price with Allied. You could say no, and then Allied has the opportunity at that time to determine whether it's within their cost allocation to continue to provide services.
So if we say no, then we can go back to that page 20 you were talking about, and they can cancel the contract?
Well, the question that they would have to ask themselves is if, is, by saying no, you're not necessarily in breach of the contract. They have to determine whether it makes business sense to continue to supply Wooddale at that time. But the way the fuel adjustment language is written, it really is to be fair to the city and to Allied, and recognize that at one point in time, fuel costs were kind of volatile. At that point in time, I'm sure Allied took some hits, because they had written in contracts without a fuel adjustment provision. I think the provision just... I think the provision just puts everybody on notice that there's the potential that if these benchmarks or pegs, or whatever you want to call it, are hit, they may come back and talk to the city. But the city's not bound, and the benchmarks in here, in paragraph four, have the benchmark increasing every year. Meaning, you know, right now, it's, if fuel is at $2.75, before they can even come, it would have to hit $3.75. In the year, in the next year, it would have to be $3.92. So every year, the fuel cost allocation increases to accommodate natural increases in the cost of gasoline, although hopefully it'll continue, it'll go down. But I really think what this is, is it's an agreement to discuss the possibility of a cost change or of a pay change.
Does anyone, other, let's see, Alderman, Ray Wesley, anything?
Yep. These new trucks that you're looking to purchase, I take it you're going, all these, all the towns that you have now, that you're trying to do the same thing with the, for renewal of their contract?
Not exactly. You'll be the, one of the first that we've tried this at because a lot of the towns that we haul, we have alley service, and those trucks probably aren't suitable for alley service.
Okay.
So the thought is that we would use them here on two days and find another town or towns to run them the other three days of the week. So, but eventually, we think that everything is going to be containerized because, you know, it's our belief that eventually the federal government's going to pass an ergonomic standard which will not permit our drivers to, you know, load, load the garbage by hand.
The reason why I'm asking for this is because if, if Wooddale decides to go back to one day, you're, I take it you're doing it two days because you don't have enough trucks?
That's correct.
And then, and as time goes by, I'm sure you're going to buy more trucks, possibly.
I would hope so.
Do we have a, is this contract set that if Wooddale wants to go back to one day after they get new trucks, that we could go back to?
I don't know that we'd be in a position to do that. I, I think we're going to try to find another town to put on the other three days of the week, and that you'd have the Monday, Tuesday.
But what I'm saying is, Wooddale's set for seven years on two days. Say the two days isn't working for us, and you have enough trucks to possibly do Wooddale on one day. Do we have a way out that we could say, that we could go to one day if you're, if you have enough trucks?
No, I, I'm thinking, once we go into this agreement, there's, there's no way that I can tell. Mr. Dickson, is there any kind of...
Yeah, I'm sorry, Alderman, where? The parties can always, if there's an agreement reached, the parties can always mutually agree to modify the terms of the contract. So if in the event Allied did have the hard equipment that they could meet that one day a week, and if the city did want to go back to one day a week, if the parties could agree, the parties could modify that term. But right now, the contract as it stands, you would be agreeing to the Monday, Tuesday pickup for the term of the contract unless something changed and the parties could agree otherwise.
Okay.
Yes.
And these totes? And say they get vandalized or damaged? Is there going to be a cost to residents for new ones?
No, sir.
None, okay. Are these totes the same totes that we have now with the logo and...
They'd be very similar. They may be a different manufacturer, but they're virtually identical.
But they'll have the logo on it?
Yes.
Okay. Madam, one more question?
Sure.
I look at these trucks too, for yard waste?
Right.
Are you picking up the yard waste the same way as you're picking up the container? Or is there an opening in the back of these trucks?
The yard waste would be picked up with the conventional garbage trucks.
So it would be lifted?
Yes. We, we don't have plans to, to containerize that yet with the, with the cart.
Because I, I don't know how strong this clause is, or I'm thinking that people that have their plastic garbage cans for their yard waste or galvanized or whatever they're using as a design container, that are these claws going to damage these?
In regard to the yard waste, we wouldn't use the claws. And that's why we want to go to sort of a standard cart, because the standard cart, we can adjust the mechanism so it doesn't damage the cart.
In the city I live in, three trucks go down the street every Friday. There's a garbage truck that's automated, picks up the garbage toter. There's a recycling truck that's automated, picks up the recycling. And there's a conventional truck that goes down, and the garbage hauler gets out of the truck and picks up whatever I've got and throws it in the back, just like he does right now. So two of the three would be automated. The third, the yard waste, would not be automated.
Okay, so we're staying that way?
Yeah.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Alderman, Eugene Wesley.
Thank you. Actually, do you do Bensonville now? Now, why would you not propose the same deal with Bensonville with these trucks? You just said that we are the first. When's their contract up?
I think in about four years. One is, Bensonville, until recently, did not have recycling bins. They had a bag program. We had a number of towns that had bags. So in those programs, the participation in those programs went down steadily over the years to where it was very low participation. So what we did in Bensonville recently is, we provided everybody with a recycling bin. Given the volumes, it seemed like that was the most appropriate thing to do. Now, in retrospect, I think we're telling ourselves, maybe we should have, instead of providing the people in Bensonville with a 20-gallon bin, provided them with a 64-gallon cart. But we didn't. So we're, we're having to amortize the bins that are in Bensonville. And what we had heard from the council before was as much concern about a recycling cart as a garbage cart. Because people had even pointed out to us that there's a lot more blowing trash coming from the recycling than from the garbage. So this seemed to be a good idea. I mean, what we've seen across the board is that our volumes of recycling have declined, especially in the last two or three years. I think some of that's just a function of the economy. I think some of that's a function of newspaper readership, that fewer people are subscribing to newspapers, and also, the newspapers are lighter. So what we, what we're trying to do, or at least I'm trying to do, is take the programs and find a way to bolster them. And the best way to bolster the Bensonville program was to give everybody a bin. And I really think the best way to bolster your program, where we've got good pounds per home coming out of Wooddale, it's very healthy, but if we look at the percentage of the material recycled, it really looks like we could do more. And a lot of times, if people have one bin, they'll fill that bin, everything else goes in the garbage or in the garbage cart. And so if they have two bins, maybe they put out two bins, but there's more recycling there that can be recycled. But a lot of times, it gets to be limited by the size of the containers. And so when we look at the percentage recycled, we just feel we can do better here in terms of the percentage recycled. And I think where we've looked at other programs, and, you know, history may not be a real good guide here, but...